We'll start with a roll call. Mr. Stenbridge.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Logue.
Here.
Mr. Aiken.
Here.
Ms. Panado.
Here.
As we begin, a reminder that we are currently a six-member board. Anyone wishing an administrative deferral may request so. With that, I'll defer to, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin by asking if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 1:00 p.m. timeframe. The hearing.
Nope, let me just make sure. Martell, are you looking for a deferral?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we were prepared to argue today based upon plans that we received from an information request on October 10th, 2023.
May I pause you for a quick second? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
As this is the interpretation, is this where he would also seek deferral?
He, yes, he can seek a deferral since it's under the 1:00 p.m. timeframe. So, at this point, Secretary Stenbridge can read that into the record really quickly.
And so, this was for case BOA 1550, case 1550520 with the address of 10A Park Lane. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you all so much and good afternoon. I'm sorry, Chairman Dong and members of the board. My name is Martell Johnson of Anderson here, and I represent Martha Cassiar and Louis Prado who live at 8 Park Lane in Jamaica Plain next door and very close to the 10 Park Lane address. Late yesterday afternoon, we received the permit holders' response to our appeal. And much to our confusion, we've learned that the plans that we've been relying on have not been correct. On October 10th, 2023, we sent a, I'm sorry, a public records request, requesting all of the plans that were submitted with the permit application. What we received is not what was relied on for the application. And so, our entire presentation, the slides that we submitted last week, they wouldn't accompany the arguments that we would now make based on these renderings. So, I'm just requesting that we could postpone this hearing for a couple of weeks, two to four weeks, and we'll give it a comeback with other issues and the same issues that we've identified, but better prepared with the renderings available for you all to use God as we do the presentation.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair, apologies Javier. I know the individual who has their hand raised, that's the permit holder's attorney. So, if you'd like, they can respond to why they should be heard today. I would also.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and I would also advise that, I believe, to vote against the deferral since I believe it could be heard today and under the main issue of whether the permit was correctly issued under Article 4. But that'd be my recommendation. I know Attorney Wees just was unmuted, so I believe he can speak to it as well.
Okay, briefly, Mr. Wees, and then we'll.
Yes, Madam Chair, we'd very much like to go ahead today for two reasons. One is the issue of hardship. Jason Heimbeck and his wife are not wealthy people. They put an enormous amount of their life savings into reconstructing this garage. It is now in legal jeopardy. They've got it taken down. They have a big excavation pit on their site. They have two small children. They have a house full of building materials which can't be stored in a non-existent garage. Their kids can't really play in the yard. They would like to proceed. But more importantly, this issue of the incorrect plans is an absolute red herring. It is clear from the petitioner's own filing, they're referring to two totally different sets of plans, which are earlier proposals that were not pursued. One is tall on a very different footprint. One is low on a different layout. It's obvious from even a cursory examination of what they submitted in connection with their appeal that their plans made no sense. This is not a careful appeal based on the plans itself. This is an attempt to just delay, run out the clock on the opponent rebuilding. And what are they rebuilding? A 100-year-old garage that was deemed by ISD to be structurally unsafe. Article 4 says they can rebuild and replace it in kind. The appeal challenges, and I'm looking here at page two, it says specifically that they cannot rebuild their original garage under Article 4. Article 4 has been applied thousands of times in the city of Boston to allow rebuilding and structural strength, even the existing structure, in this case, a 100-year-old garage. That is an issue before the board that can be ruled on today. We understand that ISD can also address this issue today.
Okay, Attorney Wees, let's pause because we're going to hear all this again when you speak.
I'd like to rebut that if I may.
I'm not going to have a back and forth on this. I think we have enough information for the board members to make a decision. If someone wants to make a motion, either way, we're going to hear this. So, it's either today or a different day.
And remember, just a reminder for you, this is just the request to defer, not to approve or disprove the permit.
Exactly. We're not, we're not, we're not voting on the actual, the issuing question, just whether to hear it today. So, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. All right. Any other requests for deferral?
Madam Chair, I don't believe we have any more. I would also advise to call this case out of order and call the interpretation case first, so we can hear that right now.
I'm fine with that. That's, we can proceed. Do I need to make a motion on that or can we just proceed?
No, no. Secretary Stenbridge can just read that into record and then we can continue the presentation.
Sure, that's fine.
So, at this point, we will go to the case scheduled for 1:00 p.m., interpretation case scheduled for 1:00 p.m., case BOA 1550520 with the address of 10A Park Lane. Would the applicant end of, Mr. Johnson, and it would be asking, speak to the case?
I'm sorry, you can unmute yourself or whoever's speaking.
Sure. Madam Chair, if, if, I mean, again, I'm Don Wees. My law firm is Dean Torpey. We are based in Boston, 175 Federal Street. We can disregard the issue of the plan sets. Again, if we need to get into that, I will say simply that it is obvious from the plans submitted in connection with this appeal that they, they're inconsistent with each other. There's a two-story building attached, a one-story building. Obviously, if the appellant feels like they got an incorrect plan set from ISD, it was clear that they did not have the correct plans. They had to do to go back. ISD is a wonderful organization, gets most things right, but they occasionally make mistakes. We've all experienced that. If that's the case, they were on notice that there might have been a confusion. But none of that really matters. What they're challenging is, one of the more fundamental tools that ISD has from a public safety standpoint, which is where you have a structure like the garage shown in the picture here. In this case, this is a 1917 garage. It was built with undersized ramming lumber. The foundation had been slowly deteriorating over the past century plus. It needed to be replaced. ISD came out, inspected it, ordered it, demoed. The property owner consulted with the structural engineer to see whether there might be a way to strengthen this building and not have to go to the expense and inconvenience disruption taking it down and putting it back up. But his structural consultant also said, "Sorry, you just can't do anything here. You need to take it down." So, Jason Heimbeck, the property owner, properly got a demolition permit, took the building down, and in concert with ISD, properly filed a permit to reconstruct the garage, and that is what he's going forward with today. It is the case that he shared with his neighbors at earlier points, different plans he was proposing. He has a, you can see on the right side of this image, his house is a relatively modest house, and he does have additional FAR available to him on the property. So, he could have expanded his house and made quite a large addition. It could be 35 feet high at the property line. But Jason Heimbeck did not want inconvenience his neighbors. He just wanted to rebuild this modest garage. It's less than 15 feet high. That is to say, more than 20 feet lower than a buyright building could be. He's about six feet off the property line, but if he moved only four more feet, he could build a building 20 feet higher than this, and it could include a garage. But he didn't want to impose that on his neighbors. He just wanted to reconstruct this building. Article 4 has been used thousands of times in this city to allow a, a non-conforming, AKA grandfathered building to be reconstructed so that it's safe. That's what he's proposing to do here. On page two of the appellant's petition, it says, quote, "Strengthening and restoring," close quote, "the unsafe part of a building cannot reasonably read to mean raising, replacing the entire building" under Article 4. But that is, in fact, what ISD has allowed, again, thousands of times in the city. That should not be disputed. That, I think, is the essential issue here. Madam Chair, why don't I pause? Let's see what the appellant has to say. I'll be happy to answer any further questions that come up. Thank you very much.
Strengthening and restoring a building doesn't mean that a building can be changed in the way that it is. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can we ask our questions first and then you'll have your opportunity?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wees, can you just confirm, I may have missed this, but is the new build replace the same footprint or is it bigger? Is it taller? Is it?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, what? So, Article 4 allows the building to be replaced, and ISD has a commissioner's bulletin. It's bulletin 2010-06, and that interprets how ISD is to apply Article 4. And it provides, in this response to your question, the building has to have the same footprint and the same area as the prior building. And this was a 20 by 20 garage. You can more or less eyeball that in the picture. It just fit two cars very tightly side by side, about 20 feet wide, about 20 feet deep, and it's under 15 feet high. That's exactly what's being rebuilt. There is a, yeah, so this is being rebuilt in consistently with Article 4 and the commissioner's bulletin.
And is Mr. Joseph available from ISD if you, if folks have questions from the board? Javier, is Mark Joseph available?
Madam Chair, I believe he is. I don't know if he logged in, but let me go check really quickly.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Are there questions from the board?
It looks like there's an addition off the back of that garage, part of the drawings that isn't part of the existing footprint, correct?
That is not correct. This was the point that I made earlier. The appellant actually shows two completely inconsistent set of plans in his drawings. One is for a one-story building with an extension. That's what you're referring to. The other is for a two-story building on a different footprint. You can't add these plans up. It was obvious that they got the wrong plans somehow. We are, the proposal by Jason Heimbeck is, and what he was permitting for is to rebuild on the exact footprint, 20 by 20 footprint, no rear addition.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Not at this time. It'd be great to hear the other side of the story.
Okay.
Quick question. What's the height differential again between proposed and existing?
Both are under 15 feet, which is the applicable zoning limit here. I believe the reconstructed building, the raptors are different. The pitch of the roof is slightly different. If we need to get into that, I'm happy to address that. But it's below 15 feet, which is the applicable zoning limit.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Okay, hearing no other questions at this time for the applicant and seeing as Mr. Joseph is not yet available, we will turn it over to the Abutterer, yes?
Madam Chair, Mark Joseph is available. I got him situated.
Okay, no worries. We just wanted to make sure he was available since ISD made this decision. And, you know, if there are any questions from the board now that he is available, let's start with that, and then we can turn to the Abutterer attorney.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mark Joseph from ISD. So, I can try to answer any questions that you, the panel, has for me?
Yep, just checking if anyone has any questions yet. All right, it sounds like we want to hear from the Abutterer attorney, and then we will be back to you. Mr. Martell Johnson?
Yep. Thank you so much. I just want to address a few points. The, again, the renderings that we received were from ISD. We received these plans through a public records request, and we found a number of the violations that we argued for in our appeal based on those. It was not clear to us at all that we were making arguments based upon plans that were not submitted with the application because that was the request. And having less than 24 hours to review the new documents, we still have identified issues and have the same concerns in many, in many respects. The new renderings show that the building would be 14 and a half feet. Article 55-47 says that the building can be 15 feet high. The issue that we have here is that in what you can't see behind this building is that there's a significant drop in the side yard. And so, while it's saying that it's going to stand at 14 and a half feet, we actually believe that it will be taller than the 15-foot limit because the gross elevation is not calculated in the grade. Secondly, both of these properties sit in the Sigourney neighborhood design overlay district, and because the roof is changing from gable to hip, small project review is required for this project before a permit should have been submitted. The roof is going to change, and it's going to impact the view of our clients, from our client's window. And finally, this sits far closer to the front lot line than 65 foot limit as required by the code. I wish we would have had more time to review the plans and have visuals for you to accompany the presentation, but this is the end of what we've been dealt. But there are a number of issues that remain with this project, and it should have gone on a small project review, and it will be taller than the 15-foot limit based upon the gross elevation in the yard that drops back.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph, can you comment? Can you walk us through the Article 4.1 and the violation that is being cited?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, board. And ISD, Commission of Bulletin, and also Article 4 of the zoning allow a building to be demolished and reconstructed as is, based on engineer's report and also building inspector's report. So, we had an engineer's report that tells us that the building has been in distress, dilapidated, and beyond repair. And our building inspector also went to the scene, inspected the building, and find out the engineer's report was correct, and the building inspector wrote the violations. And owner of the buildings of the garage came to us, applied for a permit, invoked Article 4 to remove, demolish, and rebuild as is. And the height of this, of the garage is not going to be taller than 15 feet, as the code requires, as Mr. Johnson alluded to. And all he alluded to was for brand-new constructions. Brand-new construction has nothing to do with this garage, which Article 4 was invoked. We have dealt with this situation many, many, many different times before, and I've been a plans examiner, building inspectors, and also now inspectors of buildings, building commissioner for the city of Boston for the last past three years, and I've been with the city ISD for 29 years, and that has been common practice for us to allow dilapidated, distressed structures to be rebuilt as is. Following.
Mr. Joseph, just to, just to clarify, where is the height of the building measured from? So.
From grade.
From grade.
That the surveyor established the grade, from the front grade, from the front grade, yeah.
From the front grade, so.
You have a hip roof.
So, it's up front of the house?
Yes.
Towards the sidewalk, correct? Not at the back of the house?
No. If you have a hip roof, it's half, if the mean grade from the hip roof.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not from all the way up to the tip of the roof, if the mean from the hip roof, yeah. That's how the grade, the height of the inner buildings get measured.
And then is it measured, it's measured from the sidewalk? Is that the grade of the ground that it's measured from?
That's correct. That's where, that's the grade. That's where it get measured from, not from the back, not when, that's the grade there.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Madam Chair, I could also add, the issue of grade is less pertinent where we have 100-year-old building. It's just being reconstructed. It's, it's, it is a non-conforming building. It is slightly into the side yard setback. The modern setback is 10 feet. It is slightly into that setback, but like many buildings in Jamaica Plain, they're a little closer one another than they can be reconstructed today. But it's a modest building. Were we to rebuild it, but try to measure grade from the sloping backyard, we'd end up with the garage that you could fit a toy car into, but not an actual vehicle. You can see from the picture, this is a modest building. The Abutters have lived next to us for 36 years since they bought their house in 1987. Their neighbor's yard is torn up. His savings are invested in this property. And I have to add one other point. We've been focused on Article 4, which should dispose of this, but there's a 45-day window to appeal in Massachusetts if you oppose the issuance of a building permit. The neighbors knew Mr. Heimbeck was planning to rebuild. He had taken down the garage. He'd shown them different proposed modifications of the building. They had rejected those. So, Mr. Heimbeck had not proceeded with slight variations on this building. That's where the board member previously asked about the extended building, but the cantilever on the back, that was a proposal Jason made to his neighbors. When they didn't agree with it, he abandoned that proposal. So, he just went forward with the rebuild. They had until approximately August 26th, give or take a day, to appeal his July 11th, 2023 building permit. They didn't. They let him buy the materials, hire contractors, move ahead, and only after he had started work did they actually appeal. That's enormously disruptive to his life and to his family. I personally am surprised that neighbors of 15 years have taken this action for the mere rebuilding of a 100-year-old garage.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Joseph from the board? Mr. Joseph, are you responding further or is?
Yes, I would like to make one clarification on what I just heard here.
Okay, that would be.
The side yard setback for access restructures is four feet, is not 10 feet for a normal apartment. Our side yard setback rear and side can be four feet away from the lot lines according to zoning. But this one, I believe, is 4.8 feet on the, on the side yard there. So, there is no violation on the side yard whatsoever on this.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We don't refute that the building might have been deemed dangerous. What we do refute is that because it's being built under Article 4 is that it can bypass other provisions of the code. So, it should have undergone small project review when the roof shape changed. That is a provision of the code that applies to NDODs. That is in Section 55, 45.7. And in Mr. Joseph's response to our request for enforcement, he said that Article 55 doesn't apply because it's being rebuilt under Section 4, and that just can't be the case because that would make the rest of the code null and void. And also, Mr. Joseph stated the building had to be rebuilt in kind under Section 4. This is different. This building, this garage has a basement now, which increases the height of it. And so, we would just request that you revoke this permit until we're able to review and, and have this go through the proper channels of public comment and community input because there are many concerns from the neighborhood that this building is going to not be what they say it is. And also, it's required to go into small project review because of the shape of the roof in particular and the concerns of the height of the building.
Okay, as Mr. Johnson is referring to small project review, I'm going to ask Mr. Hampton if you're available to weigh in on that since he's mentioned that several times. Is Mr. Hampton from BPDA on? Okay, hearing that he's not. Are there other questions from the board? Can't see your faces. Okay, is someone ready to make a motion?
I would motion to approve this. I agree with ISD's original assessment of the bill.
Madam Chair, Javier, Mr. Collins, can you clarify when you need to approve, approve the revocation of the permit or having the permit stay?
Having the permit stay.
Okay.
And is there a second?
Second, there is, BPDA did ask for through what proposals for the design review?
Okay, Mr. Collins, are you willing to revise that to include BPDA design review?
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure how to word that, Javier. So, approve the building permit with BPDA designer view? Does that make sense?
Well, I don't believe that is necessary as this is just whether to approve the revocation of the existing permit as it's been under Article 4. It wouldn't have to go through BPDA designer view at that point.
Okay, so the, the motion is to approve the original decision by ISD, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Stenbridge has seconded. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Okay. With that, we'll return to the other hearing schedule, 1:00 p.m. First was case BOA 1536690, the address of 1208 C DFW Parkway.
Yep.
This is in Article 8. This is an Article 8 case. Is the applicant in or the applicant present? Could they explain to the board, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Ryan Gostaf from McDermott, De Miller, 28th State Street, Suite 802, Boston, Mass. With me as well this afternoon is Richard Olstein and Thomas Maestros from the development team. This is an appeal generally stating, seeking relief for the development of a new multifamily building at 1208 VFW Parkway, which is currently the site of a three-story commercial structure. which is currently the site of a three-story commercial structure. Once the redevelopment is complete, it will contain a new five-story residential structure with fifty-five residential units and onsite parking. Broadly stated, the building itself will have a height of approximately fifty-five feet and have approximately sixty-two thousand square feet of space. So to that end, it did require Article eighty large project review. And we received B P D A board approval on November sixteenth. However, the project does require zoning relief as well with respect to the use, which is conditional upon the site as well as its height. Having said that, generally, I'll turn it over to both Tom and Rick, who can go through some more of the project specific itself.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Thomas Maestros. I'm solely architects, who are the architects for the project as well as, uh, the environmental consultant to put together the Article eighty process. I wanted to note that the, the project was first introduced to the B P D A for, you know, back in November twenty twenty-one. So we had a long process before we had review by both butters and I A G. It's been reviewed and approved by West Roxbury Neighborhood Development, uh, West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, received endorsement by the B P D A board. There are listed here a series of, uh, community benefits. I think the only one that, uh, as, as a particular interest man had to note is that the project of fifty-five units has nine I D P units, which is about seventeen percent, uh, I D P, which exceed the, the requirement for, for the housing units as it's currently established, uh, that this project subject to, uh, that slide please. The site is located, the site is located in, uh, West Roxbury and Butts, the, um, lead and branch of the, of the commuter rail line. And also Baker Street, the design, uh, is noted a commercial, in a commercial, community commercial sub-district. The entire area is noted here on the map is, uh, is, is evolving to be a multifamily district. Can you get the next slide, please? Uh, of which, uh, we all note that the, uh, adjacent project just recently completed. But also the, uh, the release is, uh, Residence Off Baker, about, uh, maybe with housing, uh, which is a sixty-unit, uh, project. The, the current site, uh, noted in that slide, please. The, the proposed building occupies the northern section of what was originally twelve oh eight, uh, of, uh, two, two seventy Baker Street. Um, it has a, uh, it, um, is organized and designed so as to create or build upon the the, uh, open space courtyard created by the, the neighborhood development. Just the neighborhood development. It sits twelve feet off of the, uh, property line adjacent to the, uh, commuter rail line. And it is, it sits down off of Baker Street, which there's a currently a grade change of between fourteen and twenty feet as one moves from south to north along Baker Street. It has fifty-five, uh, residential parking spaces as noted here, including, uh, uh, toll stations for, uh, uh, E D, uh, recharging. And like, uh, uh, there's a pedestrian easement that turns, that goes across the site and makes its way over to Baker Street. And we'll talk a little bit more about that if we move forward. Next slide, please. Uh, there's no going to ground floor. The entrance to the building is to the, to the far west of the project off of the, uh, the, um, parking area. Uh, uh, it, uh, it includes, um, fifty-five, uh, parking spaces, interior parking spaces for biking, for bicycles, as well as some public bike spaces that are, uh, loaded near the, uh, near the parking area as well. Next slide, please. There's, the project is a composition of one, two, and three bedroom units, primarily two bedroom. Go back slide, please. It is a primarily a four-story structure, but with the fifth floor, uh, being recessed and provides the balance of the unit. So they're noted in the, in the, uh, the portal. The, uh, western end of the site, uh, uh, of the, of the roof area to me is, was planned to be used for additional open space in addition to the, uh, courtyard. Next slide, please. You can see from this slide, the, where the building has been designed to have that upper floor be set back. And also note on the right of the plan that the building does sit back considerably from the, uh, Baker Street, Baker Street side. It requires to get the pedestrian access. It requires a series, uh, series of ramps and steps that will, uh, allow the pedestrian access to move across the site and up to Baker Street. Uh, as the, the extensive grade over on Baker Street, further mitigate the overall height of the building. So proceed tight from Baker is actually only a three-story structure. And go on the next slide, please. This is the view from the, the parking area from the west of the building entrance. You'll note the, uh, significant setback from the N B T right of way on the left. And you'll note the relationship of the proposed building to the, uh, recently completed residence, uh, at Baker Street off to the right. Next slide, please. Uh, again, this is the, uh, elevation of the building from the east. You'll see the, again, in greater detail, the extensive grade change. You'll note the setbacks of the fifth floor to, to mitigate the visual impact on that fifth story. And you'll note the, uh, the, uh, relationship to the existing biaduct on Baker Street and, uh, N B T right of way. Next slide, please. Uh, one of the major features that have been incorporated into the project at the request of the B P D A has been a series of, uh, a ramp and stair structure that will allow public access from the project in the project site and the project open space and the public at large up to Baker Street. Next slide, please. It was that, uh, open, it was that, uh, feature that required the building to actually be shortened and resulted partially in the creation of the, uh, fifth floor. You'll note here that the open space has been organized in courtyard manner to build upon the, uh, the adjacent open space created by the Residence Off Baker site. Next slide, please. I think we're done. So, uh, what I want to note, as was already mentioned, the project requires a conditional use of permit because multifamily residential is not allowed in the commercial district. It requires a height relief from the forty-five feet to fifty-five feet, which has been somewhat mitigated by the, the setbacks. It also should note is that the building allowable density for the site is an F I R of two. The site is, uh, much lower than that, uh, just at one point one six. So it's, it's given back an awful lot of F I R to make the project, uh, functioning. And with that concludes the basic, uh, comments that have been, uh, given me kind of a presentation available to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Is the B P D A project manager on by chance?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am on.
Uh, can you, uh, give us some context?
Um, I can, yes. Um, on February thirteen, twenty twenty-three, the Boston Planning Development Agency received a letter of intent from the opponent. On May eleven, twenty twenty-three, we received a private notification form for the proposal that, uh, Thomas just stated. Fifty-five units, fifty-five surplus parking spaces with nine, um, affordable units. Um, we held an I A G meeting, a virtual public meeting, and a joint I A G, um, public meeting for the proposal. Both the virtual public meetings were advertised in local paper and by email. And the call period for the project ended on June sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Questions from the board?
Can you just talk a little bit about the nine affordable I D P units? What, um, what A M I they're targeted to?
So they're all eighty percent A M I. It's consisting of two, two bedrooms. The rest are all one bedrooms.
Uh, same as also the one three bedroom in the mix of I D P.
Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, uh, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. As, as you heard from the B P D A, this went through a lengthy community process. We understand that there were some residents who raised concerns regarding the proposed height as well as, uh, traffic and parking. One resident mentioned there's some illegal parking issues with the intersection of Baker and Durant and was concerned that this development would contribute more to illegal parking. I understand that also some other residents had some concerns regarding how the ramp is, is formulated to connect with Baker Street. The applicant did go on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which, uh, agreed to approve or support this proposal. But that will defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, um, I was looking at the wrong project. The A M I, the, the unit breakdown is seventy percent A M I. And it's, uh, they went through the A F H process, which, um, requested that they try to, uh, provide as many family units as possible. So it's providing, um, one three bedroom and, um, one, two, three, four, six two bedrooms and, uh, two one bedrooms.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. Other raise hands? Okay, um, Minor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Minor Perez, representing hundreds of union carpenters that live and work throughout the city of Boston. Would like to go and recognize support of this project. And we appreciate the developer's consideration for our issues. Thank you.
Okay, and I have no additional raise hands. All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, with B P D A design review.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you all.
Next, we have case B O eight, one five three, nine zero six zero, with the address of nineteen Pine Cliff Road. Is the applicant and/or the representative is present? Could they explain to the board first?
Uh, yes, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of the applicant, um, Robert Cuddy. And this is, as Mr. Stembridge said, nineteen Pine Cliff Road in West Roxbury. This is, it's zoning is a one F six thousand. And so this proposal is to change occupancy of an existing three-story, two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. The existing third-floor attic and space will be renovated to accommodate a new dwelling unit. No exterior work or structural work is being proposed. And the existing building remains the same in scale as to the two-three building in the area. The egress for this new unit and exterior porches and stairways have been completed under a separate permit. As a result, this proposal provides an additional housing opportunity while imposing minimal to no impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. The unit mixes are floor one, you have a three-bed, one-bath, approximately thirteen hundred square feet. Floor two, three-bed, one-bath, thirteen hundred square feet. And floor three is two-bed, one-bath, twelve hundred square feet. Arcing is provided via driveway alongside the building. And there's a garage located below the building. There's also an existing, uh, uh, concrete service in the back of the home that can accommodate parked vehicles. The violations in this were minimal. We had an F I R, and we had a use, which is a pre-existing non-conforming for the two because it's in a single-family zone. And while this sub-district is a one F and a three F is a forbidden use, the parcel is just two homes away from Washington Street, which accommodates a number of multifamily residential and three-family uses. Additionally, it's directly to the left of this building is a six-unit condominium development as a director butter. The proposed floor will exceed the F I R with no exterior changes proposed. There'll be no impact to the surrounding neighborhood. We have provided this board with thirteen letters of support, including a letter from the director butter at thirty-five Pine Cliff, which is the one who would be most impacted. The applicant started the process without an attorney, had a successful butters meeting. However, due to not being familiar with the zoning code and questions he was asked, the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted against it by three to two. As you will see from the B P D A recommendation, this proposal fits in scale and is consistent as there are many larger buildings located next door and a few doors down the street. This proposal has always been set up as a three. However, assessing has had it for a two for forty years. The applicant simply wanted to renovate the space. However, he, as a homeowner, he wanted to make sure that he did it legally. And that's why he filed these plans with ISD. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pugini. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process in a butters meeting was held on November fourteenth. As you heard from the applicant's representation, there's a number of support letters on file. And I understand that the most recent time of the event of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council was November twenty-eighth. The proposal passed with support from the, the neighborhood council. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you see Minor, go ahead. We have no additional raise hands, please. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I motion approve.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue? Who? Sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Owen, have a nice day.
Next, we have case B O eight, one five three, five two six six, with the address of one six, one seventy-six Miners Street. If the applicant and/or the representative is present, could they explain the case to the board first?
How you want for this proposal? I don't see any raised hands.
Someone need to speak, John Doherty, he was on mute.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like he is trying to speak. I don't know if he's, uh, he needs to be raised to a panelist. Jessica, do you see him?
Uh, John.
John Doherty.
Is he under J P?
Uh, he's under, he's under John Doherty. He's, he's already a panelist, so he can just unmute himself. I, it's not going to be a problem. Okay, Mr. Doherty, if you can hear us, uh, you need to unmute yourself.
I know he was on yesterday and he was having issues when we did the pre-check-in, but we were able to get him situated, um. John, can you help us?
Oh, okay, there you go. We can hear you now.
Hey, how are you? Yeah, sorry to that.
Okay, you're gonna need to, I think, uh, let go of one device 'cause you have an echo.
Okay, you need to go, yeah. And then go, yeah. Yeah, sorry to that, members of the board. And J P Doherty, I own the first floor and basement unit at one seven six Miners Street. And a proposal to change the use of occupancy from commercial on the first floor back to residential, which would actually make it a four-family then because, um, the basement unit is residential, but it was part of the first floor, which is commercial. So I'd like to change the first floor from commercial to residential and then have the basement unit a separate unit on its own.
Okay, any, um, external changes?
No, not, everything's staying exactly the same.
Okay. Questions from? Okay. Questions from the board? Just, you, you said there was an existing basement unit already, correct?
Yeah, but it was part of the first floor.
Part of the first floor, so part of the first floor, meaning it was commercial as part of the first floor.
No, there, it was zone residential in, in nineteen eighty-six. Went to the Board of Appeals in nineteen eighty-six to make the first floor commercial and basement residential, but it was all considered the one unit.
Okay. What's the ceiling height in the basement?
It is seven foot four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, um, to the, to the proponent, will there, will there be, will people be living in the basement?
Yep.
So there'll be bed, bedroom for the basement?
Yeah, there, there already is. There's a bedrooms and a bathroom and a kitchen.
Mr. Collins, any issues with the ceiling height?
No.
Okay.
Needs to be at least a date.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ross Cochran with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office held a butters meeting in November of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I also have two letters of support that are on file and the civic association in this area does have a letter of support on file as well. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Remus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to on record support this proposal.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve.
Can we add proviso that no building code relief be granted?
Okay. They have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 154, seven five eight one with the address of fourteen Hillside Street. Attorney Small, sir.
I sure am. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small of a business just, address of fifty-one Dobson Road. With me today is Ms. Bonnie Tan, who is from J C B T Architects. Um, Madam Chair, we're here today seeking to confirm the legal occupancy of the building as a three-family dwelling. Uh, the zoning sub-district here is a two F four thousand and our lot size is eight thousand six hundred and ninety square feet. Uh, we have two violations uh, with regard to the project. Um, off-street parking, um, as you can see from the plot plan shown, shown is, um, we have a wide enough driveway, we have an existing garage in the back of the property. Um, we have plenty of green space in the back, which we chose not to remove so that, um, we can keep the green space and have the parking uh, in the garage and, and in the driveway. Um, the other violation is a forbidden use, it's a three-F because it is a two-F zoning sub-district. Madam Chair, um, the, it's currently a three-family. Um, the, um, plans will show that we're proposing on the first floor, three bedrooms, two baths at approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. On the second floor, we have three beds, one bath at approximately twelve hundred square feet. And we have on the third floor, three bedrooms, one bath at approximately nine hundred and fifty square feet. Madam Chair, if the, um, we can scroll down. Um, the only change to the exterior is we are removing the exterior staircase leading up to, to the, um, second and third units and we are placing that staircase on the interior. Um, the building will be fully sprinklered. And if you scroll down one more, I think there should be a, um, well, we've been taxed, the assessing of records have us being taxed on this property as a three-family since nineteen eighty-five. I think that should be one of the slides. I don't know, Jessica, if we can get that shown. Um, but we have been taxed as a three-family, um, and it is, will continue to be a three-family. Um, the, the units are rentals as we, we do have current residents in the building. We have, um, young professionals that work at the hospital and we have, uh, one unit occupied by two students at Northeast University. I'll stop there and, um, entertain any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. So just clarifying, you're currently using it as a three-family and you're trying to legalize it as a three-family?
That is correct. Um, I don't know if, if the assessing records are able to show, I think we sent that in. Or was it, but yeah, so there was a little bit of a discrepancy at I S D and the, um, the records, they didn't have records of the, of the occupancy. So what we did was when we applied for the permits to do renovations, they said we have to go to the back, to the board to confirm the occupancy as a three-family and that's what we're here to do.
And to clarify, are there any act, any changes to the, the building, interior or?
Not at all. Everything's staying the same. Just the interior work. Again, we were fully sprinklering the building, um, and the, um, current residents will remain.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Uh, we have that. That's our second question.
Okay. Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Maggie Vanskoy with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. We held in a butters meeting for this application on September thirteenth of last year. There were questions, but no clear support or opposition expressed during that meeting. The applicant also met with the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services, who are in opposition to the proposal, as well as the Community Alliance of Mission Hill, which is in opposition to the proposal, voting one in favor of the proposal, twenty-three opposed, and one abstention. We know of concerns about the owners not meeting with neighbors on this proposal, about the current condition of the property, the apparent lack of support from a butters and just general opposition to the building changing from a one to a three-family use. Um, and with that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Other question, I mean, other comments? I just do see a raised hand here. Martin sent a request to unmute you. Can you, um, give us your name and address and tell us briefly if you're in support or opposition?
Thank you. I'm Martin Ballbon, eighty-eight Allegheny Street in Mission Hill and speak as president of the local community lines in Mission Hill. Our civic association after meeting twice with the proponents, attorney voted in overwhelming opposition. Issues brought forward by neighbors in the butters, including the following four. One, property has a history of poor upkeep. Two, the garage appears to be used as a shop. Vents have been unloaded, unloading stream wheel motorcycles at all hours of the night. Three, evidence for overcrowding, four letter boxes, unit in basement before I S D inspected and cited. And four, owners behind, hide behind an L S E construct but refuse to give the actual name or address or to show up in hybrid community meetings. For these main reasons, we do not support allowing three-unit building in a two-family zone. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Uh, John? Go ahead.
Hi, um, John Francie Howe, twelve Hillside. We are direct butters and the house is a zoo. Um, there are people coming and going all night. There's a number of people in the basement. It's, upkeep is not good. The mail is never taken in. The trash is always out. There's, right now, there's a, a bed and all the trash cans dumped in the, um, in, into the driveway, uh, and the, the little garage. We can't exactly figure out what it is, but there are a, a very large number of trikes and small motorcycles that go in and out, um, all night on the weekends. Um, they are taken out by, um, uh, van and trucks and taken to places. People ride them and then they're brought back. It's, it's very disturbing. It isn't anything normal that you expect in a, in a decent residential area. I don't trust this landlord at all. And plus, we don't know who he is, we don't know where he is, and we can't get in contact with him at all.
So can you please state whether you're in support or opposition for the record?
Opposition.
Thank you. It just needs to be in the record.
Oh, no, no, I, thank you. Thank you.
Mitch?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is, uh, Mitchell Hilton. I live at fifty-nine Eric Boyce Street and on Mission Hill. I've been a Mission Hill resident for over fifty years. I'm the past, uh, president of Mission Hill Little League. Um, I'm a board member of, uh, Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services. Um, letter of opposition was cited earlier. Um, I just want to, uh, Ms. Vanskoy did a very good job of summarizing, um, the neighborhood, the opposition um, as voiced, um, by the two neighborhood organizations. Um, and Ms. Howe, the immediate butter, um, also stated opposition. Three or four opportunities and the property owner declined to speak to neighbors of butters in regard to this proposal. I support the house, um, I support the two community organizations, Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Service and Community Alliance of Mission Hill. And, uh, we are opposed to the request for the reasons stated by the two previous speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Well, Mr. Small, can you, um, respond especially to the basement living as well? I don't, is that, is that part of the living space or what is the situation?
No, the current proposal is gonna have no basement living space, no. It's all storage and there's one bathroom in the basement. That will remain. Uh, there could be no bedrooms in the basement under the new plan. And going back to with regard to, to the owner, um, at the meeting, the owner was out of the country and could not attend the meeting personally. I was there. Um, they asked later if he could come back on Zoom, but there was a time prior to this hearing. So that's where we are with, with regard to that.
Any other?
Other than that, again, we do have, we do rent to students. Um, the, the garage is generally used for their bikes and their motorbikes as they are students and they attend Northeast University. We also rent to, um, young professionals who work at, at the hospital.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I do have one, um, Attorney Small. How many unit, there's currently three units and are they all, there, there's three rented units at this time and it's been that way historically?
That's correct.
And the purpose of doing this is because it was identified that, that, that it was just a two, a, a two-family? I'm sorry, a one-family, but?
Yeah, the I S D records weren't, yeah, sorry about that. I S D records weren't clear. I mean, I wish I had the, um, the assessing, um, piece up because I did submit that for the record that.
So I have it here, the, the building's been being assessed by the city as a three-family since nineteen eighty-five or as far back as the record shows.
Yeah.
I forgot everything that all these neighbors have to say, but also those who buy on housing.
And so, and so part of, and part of the renovation obviously is to, um, get with the property manager and make sure that the building is kept up in a, um, in a reasonable manner.
Yeah, we can take this kind of hearing though to do that, so that's concerns me.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, I mean, can, can, can the owner agree or its management agent to meet with the community so that these, these issues can be addressed going forward?
Yes. We can, we can commit to meeting, having the owner meet with, um, with the committee group.
Okay. You may want to add that as proviso if you're so inclined. Um, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve with the proviso that the owner meets with the community. Uh, do I have to put a timeline on that, Javier, on the next?
I mean, you can, I don't necessarily, I, that's up to you, uh, David, to be honest, uh, uh, timeline. I don't know how I S D can do it. You can put on proviso that the panel meets with the community by such a date and there's so proof of that, of meeting of the community.
Uh, yeah.
Timeline, timeline you're looking for.
I know, but ask Ms. Panado.
I, I would say that, that the owner should agree to meet with the committee uh, prior to commencement at construction and during construction, um, um, you know, to address any ongoing issues.
Mr. Collins, do you?
That works for me.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 153, five seven six eight with the address of two ninety-seven Bunker Hill Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present? Could explain to the board?
Yes, I am. My name is Tim Sheehan. I'm the architect for the project at Nine Wall Street in Charlestown. Um, what, what we're doing here, this is an existing eighteen fifties, um, it's a, it's a two-family. We're converting it back to a single-family. Um, the reason we're in front of a zoning is on this parcel, there's an existing garage, which we'd like to make about twenty-five meters wider so we get two cars in there. And there's a small ten-foot wide, eleven, twelve-foot wide, I'm sorry, trapezoid outside space. We'd like to build a small mudroom entry so people could, you know, go from the ground floor to the garage without going outside. You know, it'd be, it'd involve a set of stairs. We're also here because we're asking for a roof deck. And on top of this garage, since this house doesn't have outside, you know, doesn't have much outside space the way, the way it exists, we'd like to put a bi-level deck, um, for outside space. The house, when it's finished, will be about twenty, a twenty-four hundred square foot single-family. Roof deck will be about a hundred twenty square feet. And we have five violations. We have a side yard violation, which is because we're building into the side yard with the roof deck. Uh, we have a roof structure restriction because in Charlestown, whenever you alter a roof or do a roof deck, that's a violation. Um, we're asking for about a hundred and five square foot for the mudroom and the additional garage area, but since we're already over, that's a violation. And open space, we're gonna get quite a bit back because of the decks and all, but you can only count twenty-five percent of the decks. So we'd be like seventy square feet short on that, so that's a violation. And then we have a rear yard violation because the garage is all the way at the back of the property and we're going all the way, so that would be a zero lot setback. And that's it. We've had a, we had a neighborhood meeting, which was moderately attended. And what I got from the neighbors, the biggest concern was not changing the existing curb cut, which we promised to do, which we don't have to change. It's, 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 it's close enough. Um, with that, I'll, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you. Just to confirm, you mentioned the garage going to the lot line. So is that a pre-existing condition or is, are you making it worse?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay. And one of your earlier drawings showed your abutting properties having roof decks already. Is that the case?
That's true. Yeah, the house on the opposite corner is, is the same, almost the same exact house as the brick. Yeah.
Okay.
I've done three of them, five of them on that street probably.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Can you speak to the visibility of the roof decks from the street?
Yeah, it's good from right in front. I held it back ten feet, but we're a corner lot, so there's no way to, you know, there's no way to hide it. You're gonna see it as you come up Bunker Hill Street. It's up forty-five feet in the air probably. Um, the thought with that, we just go with the cast iron steel rail that, uh, the B P D likes us to use. And it shouldn't stand out. You know, what we usually do is a structure, we'll, we'll finish the dark color like the rest of the roof. Um, that's sort of I've done when I've had this situation where I couldn't really hide it. We kind of make something out of it.
Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, and a butters meeting was held for two ninety-seven Bunker Hill Street on November twenty-nine. Since that time, this office has received zero letters of support, uh, sorry, zero letters in, sorry, zero letters in opposition, uh, one in support and a petition with twenty-one signatures from butters and residents in support of rehabbing two ninety-seven Bunker Hill Street. Uh, with that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sebastian Power from Council Collet's office. The council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Aaron Murphy's office. Would like to go and record and support.
Thank you. I have no raised hands. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with BPTA design review.
May I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have case BOA one three nine zero eight nine eight with the address of one sixty-one Waden Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Marcus, who are, you know, here from Flood Design Architects, located in Salem, Massachusetts. We are representing Ms. Haley Manson. Taylor, the, Taylor from Ferguson, the builder, is actually on the call, as well as the owner. We are actually asking for release for the roof structure. We presented the project through the Neighborhood Association. Ms. Haley had been part of the neighborhood for many years. She actually was the first owner for this particular building at the third floor. She bought it with her husband, so they've been there since two thousand and nineteen. The, the actual structure was designed for a roof deck. The neighbor abutting, the property already has a deck, so they felt they need to kind of have some steer space that they could enjoy with their family, which is the reason why we are presenting it in front of the board. We did present this in front of the neighborhoods, and, and most of the people were in support. We actually have six letters of support for this particular project. And we're asking for release from, from the boards, so I'm here for, to respond. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
All right.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bella Villagomez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for the project in June two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council in October of two thousand and twenty-three, and the group voted to support the project with a vote of twenty in favor, five against, and two abstained. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
You?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sebastian Power from Councilor's Office. The council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, have any other raised hands? Are there raised hands, Jessica? Nope, no raised hands. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there were comments from, there are comments from the disability permission.
Okay, do you want to read them?
First, there is no accessible route to the proposed roof deck. Next, the existing roof deck was incorrectly built without an accessible route, and the proposed additional deck is using the same stairs to access. Those are the comments.
Okay. Would the applicant like to respond?
Well, I was, I was not aware of that. There's actually pictures. I don't know if, I actually have them in front of the board here in my computer. They were, that access already existed, so I was not aware of that. Madam Chair?
Okay. With that information, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with BPD design review to ensure that all the roof deck elements are set back, recommended five feet from the roof edge.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Let's see everyone next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.